This one is strategic inclusion, yeah.
Good evening. I hereby call this regular meeting of MacAdoche's ISD Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that the quorum is present and notice of this meeting was posted as required by Texas Open Meeting Act. All board members are in presence. Thank you for joining us tonight. The first order of this business today is conducting executive close session. The board will now conduct an executive close session to discuss items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provision of Texas Open Meeting Act and as allowed by Texas Government Code sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, 551.076 and 551.129. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in close session would take place after the board reconvenes into open session. Time now is 5:01.
Good evening, everyone. The board now is reconvening into open session and time is 6:07 PM. Please remember that the items listed is not going to be on order. Thank you for joining us this evening and please asking you to turn your cell phone to the silent mode. At this time, I ask Reverend Pittcock to do the invocation tonight.
Source of Life, thank you for the gift of community. Guide us to be servants and to care for all students and staff with care and compassion. Help us to listen deeply. Amen.
And now pledges to the flags. Interim Principal of Margie Chumley Academy for Success, Ms. Tina Hill and her students were leading us to the pledges to the flags. Ms. Hill, before we start, I want in advance, thank you for students and their parents to be here.
Thank you.
And thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
(Inaudible) to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(Inaudible) Texas flag. Our pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all.
Yeah, let's see. Yeah.
(Inaudible)
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 Great. Congratulations.
(Applause)
Ava Grace Van Kijk. I'm a senior.
Awesome.
Congratulations. Congratulations, you're going to graduate, correct?
Yep.
Kayden Page and I'm a junior.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you for coming.
(Applause)
Thank you.
Okay, at this portion, Mr. Landberger is going to introduce the Nacogdoches High School swim team, recognized, and introduce them as well.
Yes, sir. Good evening, President Narumah, board members, Dr. Trujillo. You know, we have a lot of programs and classes and activities that produce excellence every year. But we've got some, and I think the best way to describe it is sustained excellence. And that is the swim team for Nacogdoches High School. I want Coach Scroggins and her team to come on up here, and she's going to introduce them and talk about their 25th straight trip to the state swimming and diving meet down in Austin. (Applause) Coach Scroggins has been at the helm for 20, the last 22 of those. And I appreciate her coming here tonight. Hey, she was working right up until the very last minute because she was at the track and field meet this afternoon. So, Coach Scroggins, here you go.
Okay, thank you for this opportunity. Hello to everybody. I, we had an awesome year, and we sent six events to state, which is the most we've sent in over 10 years. And so it was really exciting to get to take a big group to state and compete with six different events. So I want to introduce you to these athletes here and also to my assistant coach Thies, Derek Thies, who has helped tremendously along the way. So let's just start, I have, we'll start with Livia Whitaker. Livia swam the 100 butterfly and finished fifth this year.
Step forward so we can...
Step forward, Livia.
Yes.
She's a sophomore.
She is just a sophomore, and this is her second trip to state. She finished fifth in the fly and 20th in the IM. She swam three events there, and I think we'll see her back there again. She was also part of the 200 medley relay, swimming the 200, or swimming the fly leg. So also on the 200 medley relay was Pepper Hill. Pepper is a junior, and she was the anchor leg to that relay. And Jocelyn Lopez, this is Jocelyn's second trip to state. She is also a junior, swimming backstroke for us. And then Mickey Puffer couldn't make it tonight, but she's our breast stroker who were graduating this year. We have a few alternates here with us tonight that took the trip with us. They have been a huge part of our team this year. They have been on these relays throughout the season. They trained with us up through state and were there to experience it. And in case anyone needed some relief, so I wanted to introduce Margie Llewellyn, who's a senior, will be swimming at Centenary next year. And Madeline Ritchie is a junior. And since I have Madeline up here, Madeline was a part of the 400 free relay, which set a school record this year. It was Madeline, Mickey, Jocelyn, and Livia. So that was kind of another fun thing that got to happen this year. So our girls team, it was a lot of fun with them this year. On, hi Owen, our boys team. (Laughter) Our boys team this year, let me start with Grant Copan. Grant is a junior. He, this is first time at state. He is a breast stroker who finished 12th at state this year. He also set the oldest, well, he broke the oldest school record this year in his breast strokes. He's the fastest breast stroker since Eric Gobel, some of you might remember that name, from the early 90s. And so Grant broke his record, that had been standing for 33 years. (Applause) And his journey to break that record was just as exciting for all of us as it was for him. So he was also the breast stroker on the medley relay. Also on the medley relay, we had Ryan Boyer, swam at state. He was our backstroke leg. Grant was breast. Clayton Coffey. Clayton, Clayton, there he is. Clayton, this is Clayton, second time swimming at state. He's the butterfly leg of that relay. And Owen Allen was our freestyle leg of the medley relay. The boys also, besides the medley relay, we also had the 400 free relay swim at state. And on that relay was also Owen Allen. James Wright made his first appearance at state in that relay. He swam amazing. Also, Ryan Boyer was a part of that relay, and Clayton Coffey was a part of that relay. Alternates on the boy side, we had Gavin Whitaker, who'd been in our relays all year. He was a big part of our team, is a senior. He's, he came quickly from baseball practice today. He's also a baseball player. And Syse Scroggins, he's sophomore, and he is our alternate. He's chasing Grant in that breast stroke. He's also a breast stroker. So I think that's everybody. But anyways, this is a great group. We hope to make a trip... We hope to make a trip back to Austin next year and keep, keep it rolling. So thank you guys so much.
Coach Scroggins. Coach Scroggins, on the swimmers. When I was in high school, when I go to school 6 o'clock in the morning, you guys were already swimming in cold weather.
That's right.
And there's something that nobody noticed. When I was checking eligibility of all the students, swimmers were highly, highly educated.
Yes, and these are no exception. I think we had, out of 50 swimmers, we had 42 earned Academic All District. So I'm really proud of their...
And congratulations, you as a coach.
Thank you, thank you.
Big group.
You have to wet your hair so you look like a swimmer.
I never see them in their clothes. They'll get swim things on, and they'll wear their goggles.
If you're on the back, you're on the weather. Okay, right here, guys. One, three, one, two, three.
Thank you very much.
Wait, wait, wait.
That's right, Coach. March is Social Worker Appreciation Month. And I would like to welcome Tamisha Santana, Social Worker at Thomas J. Russ Elementary, and Jamika Shivers, Social Worker at Emmeline Carpenter, to come up here. They have a presentation they're going to show in honor of it being Social Worker Appreciation Month.
Good evening. My name is Tamisha Santana, I'm the Social Worker at Carpenter, and with me is Jamika Shivers, and she's at, I'm sorry, I said that wrong. I'm the Social Worker at TJR. And today, we're just gonna share some things with you, what's going on in the Social Work Department, and, cause like he said, March is Social Work Month. And the theme for this year was Social Work Compassion Plus Action. This is our team of social workers. You have Kim Pineda, she's at the McMichael Middle School. Keisha McClendon is at Margie Chumley. Carmy Palamo is at Reggae. Ruby Ramon is at the high school. Ms. Almo's at BQJ. Jamika Shivers at Carpenter. Kaylee Carson at Mike Moses, and myself at TJR. Okay, and today we're just gonna share some things about how we work with the school, how it all ties together with the child, school, home, and community. Some of the things that we do help with at school is behavior and emotional concerns, educational attendance, code of conduct, social adjustment, and crisis intervention. In the home, we can help with basic needs, family concerns, legal concerns, domestic violence, homelessness, foster care, suspected child abuse or neglect, holiday assistance, teen pregnancy, teen parenting. And we also help to connect these families to community resources, such as public health concerns, mental health needs, parent support, suspected alcohol and drug abuse. And one of our main roles is to provide direct services to the students as well as crisis intervention. We provide support to the students who are having social, emotional, and behavior challenges. We collaborate with the teachers and the parents to address the students' needs. We also help, like I said, connect families to community resources, and we pretty much act as a bridge between home, school, and community. And this is to promote academic success and just overall student development. And one thing I love about this model right here, it just shows how social workers, we don't just focus on the child, but we focus on the whole child. We focus on their basic needs, what they need at school, what their health needs, we focus on the entire child. Because when a child is struggling at home, or their basic needs are not met, or they're spending, going through a crisis or trauma at home, they're not gonna do well at school. So that's why we, that's why we're here. We say, we're here to help them address some of the barriers that they face at home. And we try to help them with, so that they can be more successful when they come to school. The next slide is gonna be on data, and Jamika's gonna talk about it.
So for those of y'all that like numbers maybe as much as I do, we have some colorful charts up here. What they're showing is basically what kind of needs we identified and what intervention types we've done throughout the year. And now, this data is just for the first semester, so it's for the first three, six weeks. We served 741 students across eight schools in the last semester. And you can see that on the needs identified, our larger portion is that emotional, behavioral, mental health section, basic needs, and then getting into that educational support and family support as well. And then the intervention types, which is where we come in and we interact with the students, we interact with the families, we interact with the staff. A lot of that looks like individual and group work. So direct face-to-face, one-on-one with families, students, staff as well. And then the next one is student needs, so that can be anything from school supplies to a jacket. And we have case management, all of these things underneath as well. And for the first semester, we did have 61 students receiving McKinney-Vento services, so those are services where we're helping out our kiddos who are currently experiencing homelessness.
And the next couple of slides are just some pictures showing us doing what we love is working with the children. And this, on this slide, you see Kaylee and Carmy conducting SEO groups and reading to the students. Some of us, like she said, work in individual groups, and some work in small groups. And we provide interventions for anxiety, depression, behavior management, impulse control, bullying, grief, anger management. And we also, like I said, can link the families to community resources. Then you have Keisha, she's working with, she's been working with a graduating student, and she's been helping her out. And you have Kim and Ruby visiting with students. This is your middle school social worker and your high school social worker. And what we do, we make sure that once a child leaves elementary, like if they're with me and they're going to middle school, and it's a child that has a lot of basic needs, a lot of socio-emotional concern, one that we've been working with, we don't want that lapse in services. So we make sure we collaborate with that middle school social worker, that high school social worker. So when they leave us, they know that they're, they're going to someone else that they can trust and that they can talk to in times of need. So that's one thing that we're good about doing in our department, is making sure there's no lapse in services with our, the students that we work with. The next slide, you have myself and Chief Barton, he came and we talked, and he was able to present on the dangers of vaping. You have, you see Kim, the middle school social worker, she's at orientation, middle school orientation, handing out school supplies, community resources, and she's, she also conducted a food drive for the, for families in need. And then you have Jamika, she's helping students celebrate their behavior achievements. One thing that we do encourage is our students, when we're doing small group or individual work, is when they're working on their behavior, impulse control, anything, is we do encourage, we do set small goals with them, and we do celebrate their accomplishments, no matter how big or small. We do let them know that we do see them making progress. And then you have Kaylee Carson, she's delivering Harvest Helpers bag. These bags are usually donated by our local churches, and they go home with students on Friday to help assist with some food over the weekend. This slide, you have Ruby and Alma, they're shopping for homeless students. When we have homeless students, we also allow them to take showers on campus for those that don't have a permanent place. And we, we make arrangements for that. They buy hygiene products, clothing, and whatever they need. And you also see a snapshot of the portable, when we take in donations from the community, we organize it, and that way when a student or a family needs anything, like we've had families had house fires, we're able to go and grab what we need from that portable. And those, most of those donations do come from the community. And then you have myself, most of the elementary campus, we usually do a school uniform drive. And some of us that have space, we have a clothing closet on our campus. And that way when we have, especially at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, we can help families that are, that are struggling with uniforms. Then you have Kim receiving donations for, from a parent. Okay, we have Ruby, she's receiving paperwork for a student who is a teen parent. And we also have different organizations in the community that helps us with Christmas Like one of them, you, you see Alma up there, we had Shop With A Cop is what it's called, SFA, Police Department always contact us, and they always wanna help with Christmas assistance. And what that is, is they, we pick the kids that need the help the most, and then they, we meet up at Walmart with their families, and they get to actually get a buggy and shop with a cop, and they get what they want for Christmas. And it's usually the funnest thing ever. Then you have the social, social workers went to, met up at the Mexican Consula, providing community services. I think that's about it. Oh, and then that other one is the Thanksgiving Dinner, it's one of our local churches. Some of us partner with our local churches, and they help us put together Thanksgiving boxes for the families that we serve. So we're very grateful for our community and the things that they do, because without them, we wouldn't be able to do what we do without their, their help.
And then also on, on the top left, we have our wonderful lead social worker, Ruby Ramon. We do work with teen parents as well, or for students that are pregnant, and so we help connect them to those resources to make sure that safe, they're safe, they're healthy, and that they're able to still graduate.
And once again, this, we're your NISD social workers, and thanks for having us.
Before you... Ma'am, ma'am.
Yes.
I'm normally very short on the words, however, I'm very sincere. I believe there is a place in heaven for social workers and those who work with the special needs students. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could, I think most of you know that I was a social worker, and one of the reasons that I'm up here is because it was very important to me to see social workers in schools, because I see the worth, I see the, the experience, the abilities, the ability to get a child to feel good about themselves, to know that there is a better life than what they've lived. So for me, it's a really personal thing about social work. And I thank you guys for all the hard work that you do, because we have kids that need it, and they need a lot of support. Thank you so much.
Could we have all the social workers stand up that are here? Social workers, if you're a social worker, can you stand up? I'd like to thank all the social workers for transforming students' lives and giving them a helping hand to reach a new level and to, so they can have success. And thank you for this handout, so we can go over it at our leisure for a second time to really understand better what you do and how you're helping every one of our students. Thank you.
President Fashid, if I may, I, I know we're recognizing you as social workers, but I'm gonna turn and put the mirror back on these seven board members that are up here. I will tell you that sincerely appreciate the efforts of all seven board members to make this a commitment. I found it, and I'm just gonna be honest, coming in as a superintendent and serving at other places, this is an anomaly. Nacogdoches is an anomaly. You do not have a single social worker on every campus. You typically share campuses or you contract those services out. That's how important this is to this board. Because I told them, you can have anything you want, but you can't have everything. That means that we're looking at budgets and looking at commitments. And this board, in their entirety, said this is a priority. So I know it's time to recognize you, but I also want to make sure that our community knows that it's also this board up here that is making this extremely possible. And it's at the will of the board that I serve with regards to providing the services for our kids. And I have seen y'all in action. We have kids that came from Uvalde, and you found them before we had an alarm that would startle them, and I thank you for that. We have homeless kids. When we say McKinney-Vento, you guys see these kids, and they don't have a mom and a dad. We have one or more children that are basically living on their own, and you are their guide. So when we say McKinney-Vento, we think homeless, and it's mom and the kids, or it's dad and the kids. Sometimes it's just the kid, and you're able to identify that and be able to provide those services and give that service to our students. So for that, I appreciate what you're doing. But more than that, I thank this board for their vision and making sure that this is possible for our students. So thank you so much, and I also thank this board for that tremendous decision.
We really do appreciate you all seeing that vision and the needs on each and every one of our campuses.
Thank you. Okay, now we are in superintendent's report and announcements.
Well, it's, it's, it's bittersweet, this is my last announcement, but I wanna recognize the tremendous work that goes on on our campuses. The work, it's, it's amazing. You saw the talent of our swim team that's up here, and I'm telling you, we can, we can have a meeting here for days in bringing in kids that are doing amazing things. So we're just spotlighting a few of them. Nacogdoches High School, the one-act play is still on stage, the NHS production of the Bald Soprano, advanced to the by-district round of competition last week. The by-district contest will be held on April 3rd. The NHS Theater Department returned to the Bald Soprano for the one-act play competition and turned the theater of observed-style production into first place at the University Interscholastic League Zone Contest during the week of spring break. That qualified them for the district championship, where they earned a by-district berth. Congratulations to our theater students and their staff. Once again, when I say spring break, that's also the teachers. The rest of us are enjoying spring break, we have teachers out there, not just coaches out there, early, early in the morning with the swim team, it's also our, our wonderful teachers that we have in the district. For Nacogdoches High School, student art students scored fours and earned medals in the Regional Visual Arts Scholastic Event held last month in Longview. Juniors Alicia Dowell and Avaniya Grimes medaled in fourth-year division in Pine Tree High School, and juniors Pepper Hill, who you met earlier, and Haley Shadows medaled in a third-year division remaining in the Theme of Fine Arts. McMichael Middle School's choir brought home first-division ratings onstage and in sight reading earlier this month at the University Scholastic League Region 21 Concert and Sight Reading Competition. The Treble Choir from McMichael received top ratings from all judges in its stage performance and in sight reading portions of the contest. McMichael also entered the second choir in the competition, that's the first time for this campus to enter a second one. The Tenor Bass Choir also earned top ratings in both concert and sight reading. Now you will get to see the work of these outstanding students on Saturday, April 12th, when we host our Fine Arts Showcase at Nacogdoches High School. All our fine arts programs from around the district, elementary through high school grades, will be featured. Deschmond, are you in here? Is he in here? No, he's not. But I'll tell you, Mr. Johnson does a tremendous job as a director of the fine arts and puts a lot of work in this annual event, and it does a great job of spotlighting all the programs we offer as a district. If you notice, I mentioned middle school. So what, what the program will become is amazing when the students move on to the high school, because they have the experience of competition, and they're going to perform, and amazing things will be coming forward from the Dragons over at the high school. That's my report. President Fashid, and board?
Thank you. Okay, now we are portioning a public comment. We have received four requests to address the board. We have received four requests to address the board. We have three minutes for each person to address the board and our deputy superintendent, Mr. Michael Martin, keep the time. First is Ms. Anna K. Johnson.
My name is Anna K. Johnson and I'm a resident of Nacogdoches. I'm very concerned that the Nacogdoches School Board approved the Blue Bonnet curriculum without any public or parent input. The lack of transparency around this decision is concerning to me. The First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution guarantees freedoms concerning religion, expression, assembly, and the right to petition. It forbids Congress from promoting one religion over others. In public school, when Christianity is elevated above other faith traditions, we're talking about indoctrination. It is a violation of the Establishment Clause of the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. The Establishment Clause prohibits the government from passing legislation to establish an official religion or preferring one religion over another. It enforces the separation of church and state. It also appears that our state understands there is a problem with the Establishment Clause because the state has determined and included in its materials that a teacher using the new curriculum is granted immunity without any violation of the Establishment Clause of the Constitution. I understand that teaching religion and culture in classrooms can be important for understanding our history, but only if other religions are included, such as Islam, Judaism, and Buddhism, to name a few. Most references to other religions, except ancient ones, have been removed from the Blue Bonnet texts and replaced with Christian texts. Teachers are not preachers. Religion can be an important part of moral upbringing, but it should remain in the churches. Children should not be indoctrinated with a preferred religion like Christianity. The curriculum is not inclusive and can make some children feel like outsiders. While I understand there's a financial incentive for the board to approve the use of this curriculum, the harm done to our freedoms and our public school education is not worth the cost. I recommend the board reverse their approval of the use of this curriculum in Nacogdoches schools. My final comment is that a parent's right to decide what religion their child is being exposed to is being stripped away by the Blue Bonnet curriculum. And freedom of religion is a right that we cannot afford to lose in this country or this community. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Why we left England?
Next is Mr. John Watts. Mr. Watts, you have three minutes as well.
My name is John Watts. I live here in Nacogdoches. The Blue Bonnet curriculum was adopted under the veil of secrecy. The vote was taken during a private meeting with no chance for community comment or input. I assume this was done because the members of the school board knew this was a controversial issue and wanted to sneak it in and hope no one noticed. We expect more transparency from our elected officials that are making decisions about how and what our children are being taught. Easter is almost upon us. How will teachers handle the story behind Easter? When it comes to the passage about resurrection, how are teachers trained to explain to a child whom ask a question how someone can rise from the dead? Are teachers trained to handle deep theological questions which may come up when teaching the Bible? Will the teacher answer from their own faith tradition? What would a Roman Catholic, Lutheran, Presbyterian, Jewish, or Islamic teacher say? What about teachers that are non-Christian? Will they be required to teach biblical passages also? I understand art students study Leonardo da Vinci's Last Supper. It suggested that teachers read about the Last Supper from the Gospel of Matthew. There's a good chance that a student might ask a question about the bread being Jesus' body and the wine is his blood. How will a teacher handle that question? I am concerned about the constitutionality of the curriculum. So is the state legislature if they felt the need to make teachers immune to the Establishment Clause. This curriculum crosses the church-state line, which is very dangerous. Benjamin Franklin said, "If your religion needs the backing of the state, it is certainly not a religion I want to be part of." Finally, what about the children? I believe it's immoral to shove religious indoctrination down the throats of our children. I want you to imagine for a moment, what if this was a curriculum that emphasized the teaching of Islam or the Jewish faith? Would Christians still feel the same way and want that curriculum included into what we teach our children? I think not. Religious teaching should be done by parents and ministers, not the school board. Ask the school board to reconsider the adoption of this curriculum and keep religion out of our public schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Reverend Kyle Childress.
Mr. President, boards, members of the board, thank you for allowing me this time to speak before you tonight. Thank you for serving in what many people believe is the most difficult elected position in America, local school boards, and y'all do it. Thank you so much. Now, I'm here as a local Baptist minister who has been ordained for 45 years and served Austin Heights Church for 35 of those years. I'm here to encourage you to reconsider and rescind your decision to implement the Blue Bonnet curriculum in our schools. Now, I'm well aware of the arguments in support of the curriculum is that it does not teach the Christian religion, but only uses stories from Christianity and the Bible as it teaches reading and writing and history and so on. My concern is that it puts the Christian faith in an exclusionary position. No other religions are mentioned. Christianity is the only faith tradition talked about. Now, one of the greatest strengths of local public schools is that all kinds of kids are together in the classroom, on the sports field, music hall, interstage, and so on. All kinds of students learn together, learn to be together, and learn from each other. This pluralism includes students who follow various religions or no religion. My fear is that the Blue Bonnet curriculum makes Christianity not only exclusive, but even dominating. Now, the rabbi, the leader, the teacher I have followed for my entire life said the greatest commandment is to love God with all of our hearts, soul, and minds. The second commandment he said is to love your neighbor as yourself. And our Nacogdoches public schools, our neighbors include Hindu students, Muslim students, Christian students from various perspectives, and even atheistic students. All these students are in classrooms together. My question to you is, does this curriculum truly love all these students? Or does it exclude some students or even demean some? I urge you to reconsider using this curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you.
And superintendent, may God bless you.
Next is Dr. Heather K. Olson-Bale.
Have you all missed me? See Reverend Urban laughing. Okay, I need glasses now. Good evening, members of the board. My name's Heather Olson-Bale. I'm a professor of education studies at Stephen F. Austin State University. I'm also the proud parent of three graduates of Nacogdoches High School. I'm here today in my capacity as a teacher educator. Every day, I work with pre-service teachers. I work closely with pre-service teachers and in-service teachers. I'm here today because the adoption of the Texas Blue Bonnet curriculum is yet another burden placed on teachers at a time when they are already stretched to their limits or perhaps beyond their limits. Now, let me be clear. Teachers are not opposed to high-quality, rigorous curriculum. They want resources that engage students and meet state standards. But when a curriculum is infused with Christian stories from the Bible, it creates significant challenges in our diverse public school classrooms. I just talked to my students who are training to become teachers about this today and the fear in their eyes and the confusion, I wish you all could have seen it. First, this places teachers in an impossible position. They must now navigate the legal and ethical dilemmas of using religiously themed content in a public school setting. Now, we're there telling them that they need to abide by the principle of the separation of church and state, which is enshrined in our Constitution. This is confusing to them. Teachers are not trained as theologians or as religious scholars. They should not be put in the position of interpreting scripture for their students or defending their instruction when they inevitably receive complaints from parents of different faiths or of no faith. Second, this decision erodes trust between educators and their communities. Public schools serve students from all backgrounds. That includes, as Reverend Childress has said, in Nacogdoches, Christian, Jewish, Mormon, Muslim, Hindu, atheist, you name it, we've probably got it. When a curriculum prioritizes one religious tradition over others, it alienates families and sends a message, "You are not us. We are this and you are something else." It others people, which is something that we should especially not do in public education. It puts teachers in the crosshairs of culture wars they did not ask to fight. Finally, and perhaps most importantly, this adds to the growing list of reasons teachers are leaving the profession and my literal job depends on this. That's not a reason for you to do it, but I'm saying I see it every day. People are leaving, they're not staying. They're already overworked and underpaid. Now they're being asked to either violate their professional ethics or constantly defend their teaching choices. This is not why they enter the profession. It will not help them stay and it is not sustainable. If we want to retain great teachers, and obviously we have a terrible teacher shortage, we need to stop making their jobs harder. I urge you to reconsider this very unfortunate decision and adopt a curriculum that respects the diversity of our students in this community and the professional integrity of our educators. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're portioning our reports. We have one report and that is Texas Strategic Leadership, better known as TSL, update. Dr. Trejo.
President Fashid and board, this journey began almost 24 months ago, 18 months ago with the board. We went through some board training with our strategic plan outlining our goals. And we began that journey with Dr. Howard, Drew Howard, with identifying the goals, asking questions. And the leadership team was there sitting with us. It was an exciting time. I think it was over a multiple-day period of your time and you all are very well-paid for that. But I appreciate your time and your dedication in prioritizing those goals and setting that pathway for the superintendent. And also reevaluating if we realize the strategic plan. Mr. Mendoza and Ms. Apt, what's interesting is when I was reading it, it was drafted in 2012. 2012. That's the last time we tapped into the strategic plan. And so by us tapping into it and evaluating and looking at goals, we were able to have some real good conversations about what's the academic direction that we're going with our teachers with regards to the goals and the strategies that we have. And you're going to hear a little bit about the journey and the work that we've done. It's been tremendous work. Dr. Howard has led that with the board and now he's working with Tatiana and with Richard. And they are working closer with the teams, with the cabinet members, principals, campuses, community members with questions and surveys. But I'm not going to tell you all of that. I'm going to let Richard step up and kind of navigate that for the board. It's been a tremendous journey and we appreciate the work that Region 7 has had in partnering with us. By the way, Richard has also traveled with me because as a superintendent, I was able to attend some of these TSL sessions across the state to see some dynamic districts that have experienced success in the pathways. So we're not going into uncharted territory. These are territories that have been charted by districts with successful practices, effective launches in their day-to-day practices. So I'm excited about that and excited for the journey. The academic portion of now, we're turning the page and looking at a much more intense focus on that aspect of it for our teachers. So with that, Richard, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Hello, Dr. Trejo. Well, Dr. Trejo, I was sure I was hoping for a lot more praise for me, but we're going to go along with it. Anyway, board, thank you so much for having us. Again, I'm trying to figure out how to introduce myself. I'm not in a grade anymore, unless you ask my wife. I'm still in middle school, so we're going to do the best we can. So I'm Richard Nash with Region 7. And like Dr. Trejo has kind of shared, we have had the pleasure of working with your cabinet, your board. We know that Dr. Howard has done work with your board as you have began that journey, right, of setting the vision and making sure that we're all flowing together. So in lieu of that, it was June where we launched and there was a kickoff with what's called Texas Strategic Leadership. And the purpose of Texas Strategic Leadership, I'm an image guy, and so when you look at this, it's like, hey, why are we here? What are we doing? I kind of look at this and then if I would have known our swimmers were being acknowledged, I probably would have changed it to the city pool versus the nattatory. And I'm just proud I know the word nattatory because I have a swimmer as well and she didn't qualify like those kids did, so I'm proud of them. You know, and as we look at this kind of vision, we spent time saying, what's the difference? Right? And the difference is, when you look at the left, those boats are still functioning. Right? And we can't say they're not going to accomplish their goal, but I would win some money to say they're not going to accomplish their goal as quickly or as effectively as our ships on the right-hand side. Correct? So that's what our purpose is. That's where you began the work and then Dr. Trejo and the team has continued on and what we're wanting to drive that journey forward is in setting up a strong strategic plan for the next few years for NACISD. So what we want to look at is an impact model here. This is what we believe and what we've really focused on is a successful district, as you all know, it's all about student outcomes. It is about our students. And what we believe are our students, outcomes are driven by rigorous supportive student experiences. Those student experiences are delivered at the campus level by strong systems of the campus. And we can't have strong systems on our campus unless we have strong systems from our district. And then ultimately, we can't have strong district systems unless we have our effective governance. And so it's all trying to align those ships so that we're all moving in the right direction. So what we're looking here is this is what we're building with our strategy. So when you look, as a board, as a district, we've set our mission, our vision, we have our values, our envisioned student experiences. As we worked through this with the team, the community may have seen, we sent out surveys, there were a lot of conversations with our staff, our community, and the question was, what does every Nacogdoches ISD student deserve? And we accumulated that and that helped drive, what is an envisioned student experience? What do our students deserve every day? So as we drove through there, we took the outcome goals that your team began to work on. And then through some of our work, we're looking at the priorities and initiatives with the mindset of if we execute our initiatives, we're going to accomplish our priorities, which will help us achieve our goals for our students and get us closer to our long-term impact for our students. As we dove through this work, these are the principles that we centered on. Everything is centered on the student experience. We want to think about systems. I always talk about in my history, as a school leader, district leader, I like to, well, I like to, I always use the water dam as the analogy, right? And I can stick all my fingers in and try to plug all the holes and it usually wasn't effective, right? But whenever we align our systems, then we know we can plug the hole and get things rolling. So that's what we're doing, prioritizing that. One of the things that's always hard is we set a pact to make sure that we prioritize our most impactful opportunities. We can't do it all, so we have to determine what's going to be most beneficial. What rock is going to move that mountain first? And then we committed to engage and invest in all of our stakeholders and to continuously monitor the progress. So what we did on this journey is we began by starting with the current state. We had to ask ourselves and your leadership team began with a journey, we did a landscape analysis, but asked ourselves, what's our current state? Where are we? Let's take a deep look in the mirror and identify our systems. Then was we moved through this journey, we were identifying some goals, and then we're going to align systems to accomplish those goals and priorities. And then as we do that, moving forward, we want to make sure that we have plans to measure that what we're doing is actually happening. It's real easy to do all this work on the front end, make it look pretty, and see ya, right? That doesn't get the job done. And so that's what your team is committed to do. And I love this statement from Edward Deming, "Every system is perfectly designed to get the results it gets." the results it gets," and that's what our goal is, to get the results that we want by building the systems that we need. I'm now realizing how much "we" I'm saying, because as I've worked with your team, I feel like I'm part of the team, so I'll send you my paycheck by bill later. No, I'm just kidding, just kidding, totally not. So just wanted you to know, as we engaged in what we were doing at the beginning of the year as a landscape analysis, where we wanted to dig in, look at our entire district. So what we, just, these are just a little bit of the sources of analysis that we used. We did classroom observations, we visited seven of your campuses, at least 57 classrooms. We collected artifacts from across the district, more than 90 artifacts, 230 student assignments. And they were measured on, what were they aligned to high curriculum? What were they aligned to? Were they research-based? So this was all part of that analysis. We wanted to engage stakeholders, so we had some meetings, but then we also sent out surveys. We had over 1,800 student and family surveys returned to us. We had 175 teacher surveys returned, and staff is a total at least 342. On top of that, we looked at our quantitative data, we looked at our historical performance, and our longitudinal accountability. So that's what kind of drove the decision of your team, looking at, okay, what are some of our key opportunities for growth? So these are some of those opportunities that we, that were identified by your team. I'm not going to read all of them, so I'm just going to let you see it, and I know you have it there. So, and as we looked at these and identified the areas of growth, this is where, if you remember that commitment of, we have to prioritize the most impactful, right? So your team, we've driven through there, worked with staff, and identified three priorities and seven key initiatives that we want to focus on, and then they believe that you want to focus on in the next three to four years. And I brought my iPad because I knew my eyes weren't good enough to read that.
While we're pulling that up, I'll just mention and think about the times that we had, that we had together when we started this. We really worked on creating specific goals that you, as a Board, would have to focus on, and working that specificity, I can't say that word very well, but working with those specific goals to now starting to create systems. Systems that outlast us, that outlast superintendents, that outlast Boards, systems that will produce the results that we want them to produce. And that, systems then create that sustainability, right? So we'll get into these different systems, but I want you to realize, I know it's been a while since we've been in front of the Board to update, what are we doing with those goals? What are we doing with that work that we've done? It's identifying those goals that gave the first direction of where we needed to go. And then really digging into the data to find out where are the best actions? What actions are truly going to give us the best results? And they won't go into the entire landscape analysis, but you'll be able to see that and get it, and I think you will be very, very surprised and happy with the depth that that landscape analysis gives you. It identifies different student groups and gaps within different student groups, and then connects that to surveys where students will say, this is the highest percent of student groups that don't feel like they're getting the guidance in college and career that they want to have. And then it connects that to, they have a gap here with academics, and it's things that you don't see from the surface, to really give you directions to go that can make the biggest impact that you can academically. And then now diving into that, that's what's come up with these different initiatives and then the plans that will go along with them. So just want to kind of give that oversight of the work that you did at the Board, setting that vision, that destination, that has been the start. And then we're going to come back pretty soon and finish working on that scorecard to really say, these are the progress measures, this is how we're going to get updated, this is how we're going to hold ourselves accountable to be able to reach the destination that we want to go.
All right. So just for those who have eyes as, well, as strong as mine, just want to read some of your priorities. So your first priority that we landed on as a team was planning and performance management. Three initiatives that we want to move through and to build systems we want to focus on. First one is establishing clear roles and responsibilities and expectations for our district and campus leadership. We want to establish our centralized structures to support our performance management. We want to enhance district communication strategies to maximize our positive culture and climate. The second priority was talent growth and retention, and there we really wanted to focus on developing systems of support to promote the retention and growth of our teachers. We also wanted to revamp the district's strategic compensation plan for transparency and for alignment to our student progress data. Then under instructional capacity building, we saw the need to develop and communicate clear expectations for ongoing job-embedded coaching for all roles, to deliver and ensure a continuum of targeted supports for our leadership and our staff through our professional development, through mentoring, and through leadership development. So these are all things that I always have to remind myself and remind the team, we're setting, as a team, you're setting these goals, you're setting this strategic plan not to be accomplished by August 2025, right? It takes time for things to be successful and to set up. So you are looking at a, when all is said and done, and you, as the Board, are able to look at it and dive in and ask questions, you're looking at a good three-to-four, three-to-five-year plan where we want every, all the action set in place. So just want to share this last little bit here, just to kind of show the journey of what your leadership team has been on since the summer. So they've accomplished things as far as conducting a landscape analysis, determining their strategic priorities, as we just shared, and where the group is continuing to move, and as they're going to partner with you, it's, as we look at these initiatives, what are those key action steps? What are those milestones that we need to hit year one, year two, year three? And then importantly, where it will roll with you guys as well is, how are we going to measure that? How are we going to share that with our families? How are we, as the Board, going to come in and say, are we doing what we're saying we're doing? And that's where that accountability, and that's where the ships start moving. So that is all I have, because I promised a lot of people that I would speak quickly, and that's hard for me to do. But if y'all have any questions, please let us know.
Dr. Howard? Establishing a system, would you consider calling it a culture?
Say that one more time.
System.
System.
Eventually create a culture?
Yes. I think the part that you want to work at with this is not just a culture, but I think this will start to create a confident culture. A culture that can lean on those systems, that will be confident that this system's going to deliver the results that you want. And that's been a lot of the work. If you remember back when we talked as a Board and a team of how to move forward, it's, what habits do we have? What systems do we have that are given and delivering us the results we want? Those we sustain and maintain. But let's get it, do a deep dive into the systems and figure out what is it that's not giving us the results that we want? And then what changes and tweaks do we need to make to that system in order for it to deliver the results we want? Simple, right? If you're getting what you want, keep it. If it's not giving you what you want, you've got to change it or do something different.
Somehow, I'm thinking, system eventually create culture. That's the way I think.
Now, President Fashid, something real simple that was really transparent with the work that we continue to have, and it seems real easy to, simple to really pull this out, is something as simple as the mission statement. The Board comes up with a mission statement. But when you go diving into the culture of the district, somebody has interpreted a mission and creates another mission and articulates it and puts words to it. We literally found out that we had maybe three or four missions, but the Board has set one mission. Why have we deviated from that one mission? And it goes to the fact that if we don't build that full understanding of the direction of what we're doing, and also clarifying, Tatiana, you were standing there, I want to make sure you know, she's the magic behind it all, the statistician, the qualitative and quantitative information, probing and asking questions from whether it's coming from the teachers or the principals or wherever, and putting a value to it so that we can see it. So as a statistician, we will never be able to go into your mind to figure that out, but we value the work that you've given for Nacogdoches ISD and this team and for this Board, because they're going to see facts, and how did you quantify this? You were magical with that. So I did not want to not recognize you for the work that you've provided and continue to provide for our group. This was important in the transition time, Board, as your superintendent stepping away, that I wanted to make sure that as we look forward into the future, and we're looking for a superintendent, and we're moving in that direction, this is the priority. This is the direction we need to look at, is the academic and the trajectory, so that our principals that are out here and leadership that's out here, they have a vision, they have a direction, and they have a charge, and it's clear, and it winds up being that culture that President Fashid is talking about. It's a system that creates that culture as it's moving forward. And that was why it was important to ask for this report to come forward tonight, so that as we're looking forward and we're looking for that new leader and we're moving forward, this is what's more important, most important, we're educating our students. So thank you, Drew, Dr. Howard, Tatiana, Richard, thank you all so much for presenting this to the Board, so.
I'd just like to make a comment, and I hate to throw cold water on all this, but I've just got to be honest. 18 months, and this is it? It's so, this is why I could never be an administrator, I guess. I mean, it was just so general, and it took you so long to state obvious things that we need to do. I don't understand why. Anyway, I'm disappointed, so.
Ms. Apt, if you'd like to ask questions, there is a whole lot more data to go behind all of this, too. So if you'd like to ask us questions to go into it, we'd very much like to discuss it if you would like.
Well, I hate to make everyone stay here, but I tell you, if you just print it all up and give it to me, I'd be thrilled, okay?
Absolutely. Well, and I'll just say, too, that, you know, from this standpoint, from the Board's perspective, those outcome goals and those goals are going to be there for you to monitor that progress.
Yeah, I understand.
And this team will do the work to get you there.
Well, with all fairness, I want to make sure I clarify something. I asked this group to give me a brief synopsis.
I know, I'm sure you did.
So with all fairness, I do want to make sure I correct this because I understand her disappointment. But do you want this meeting to go three hours, Reverend?
They've worked all day, they're tired, they're ready to go.
So we could do this presentation as a workshop.
Yeah.
And on a workshop, you will deep dive into this. The hours, and I want to make sure that I do not, to the folks that are out there, you've put a lot of time, a lot of energy, a lot of late hours to put this together. So I think it's not a very fair statement to say that this is general, because I asked for this. I asked it to be an overview, because I want to respect the time of our audiences and to respect the time of this Board. But if the Board wants this as a workshop, we'll give it as a workshop, and it will get in deep to the information that's there. So I just want to be very clear that I take it pretty serious about the work that we've done, because this meeting did not happen without the superintendent sitting in that room, and that was ours. And without the leadership that is in this room, I could not miss a meeting. If I was not there, the meeting didn't happen, Richard. He called it off. And if I was not able to go to Houston and for that week of training and information that's there, then I was going to go to the next meeting, which was in Dallas. So there was a lot of commitment that was there from all the folks that are here, and I want to make sure that if the Board wants a report, we can give a deeper report to get the information, to get deeper, to see the bridge between the goals and the work that they've created. And they narrowed that down to three, but they could have done so many more. But we've got to make sure that we get it in sound bites so that we get it there. So if there's any responsibility it bears for this, it's on me, because I asked for a brief report, because I know that there's other things going on, and this could be a lengthy presentation. But we, it's the will of the Board. If they want this as a workshop, we can set this up as a workshop.
I did not in any way mean to imply that I didn't think y'all done a lot of hard work, but it, the impression is lots of meetings and very little results, and I don't, I know, nobody else here wants that. And a workshop probably isn't needed, Board members, you know, fellow Board members, y'all don't, you know, kill me. I'm not saying, let's have a workshop. I'm just saying, I would really like to see the data, and I'd like to see what y'all have learned besides, oh, you know, we're going to set, go, anyway, sorry.
I want to use an illustration. It's scientific. It's called inertia. If you have a ball and it's not rolling, you have to put energy in that ball to make it move. Well, that ball has not been moved by us, it's been moved by y'all. It's time for us to join forces with you and get that ball rolling faster to the right objectives for improving our students in the classroom, in their homes, in our community, and this is a start. So inertia has been overcome.
Okay. Any more questions?
I mean, just from my experience, Ms. Apt, this feels like some old-fashioned process improvement activities where they're going out into what they call GoToGamba, where you go out and you do the work, you sit down with the worker, you experience it, you write it up, and you do all of that. And I feel like that's where we are, and sometimes with something as big as this, I could see where it could take a little bit of time, seven campuses, 57 classrooms, I could see that. Because I think they're, and they're getting input from the community, which, as we heard earlier, they obviously are very concerned about that. So anyway, I, it, process improvement to me, in my world, feels agonizing at times because I feel like we put so much energy into filling out flow charts and diagrams, but it's so important if you really want the change to stick, you have to go through those steps. And I, now I'm doing it as my career, quality and process improvement, so I can really feel that those exercises are really important. But when I know what the answer is over here and I want to get here, I really hate going over this way. So anyway, I just thought I would throw that out there, just from my.
Yeah, well, again, I probably aren't, okay, I'm going to blame you.
Yes, blame me.
Because my disappointment is not in what y'all done, but in the report. I didn't want that, because I know y'all have been doing that. I wanted to know what you've learned so far, and I know you're not to the end at all, but what have you learned so far? And again, don't take up any more time, everybody is, they're shooting daggers there. So, you know, just send me an email.
Ms. Apt, I think the result eventually will show. It's not over yet. Take my word, it takes a lot of effort.
Okay. Any more comments?
No.
Next.
Now, we're in the consent agenda. Unless removed from consent agenda, all items listed will be with one motion. If there's a Board member who wishes to discuss an item on a consent agenda separately, please indicate the agenda letter that we set aside for further discussion and a separate vote. Board, are there any questions concerning consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Okay. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Ms. Anderson, it was approved.
Can I get the second again, please?
It was me!
Thank you.
Okay. Moving to discussion, action, agenda. We have, want to have a busy discussion, Reverend Irvin, action portion of agenda today. First, item A, action resulting from executive close session. I report that there is no action resulting in executive close session. Item B is donation under $2,500, Mr. Ben Everland, Chief Financial Officer.
Yes, sir. President Merman.
Board of Trustees, Superintendent Trujillo.
We have our Gibson donations under $2,500. Nothing has changed since the agenda review with the exception of one item. TJR Kansas is receiving, I believe, its trees for a donation of $2,500 from friends of the store, Nacogdoches team, and is Mr.?
Mr. Apt?
We have Mr. Apt phoning up, and he has a message for the board.
My wife, my wife, is this on? Is it, my wife periodically, when I come home in the afternoon, what did you do today? Thank you for allowing me. Dr. Trujillo, we love you and we're sorry for your going, we'll miss you. President Merman and the Board, thank you for allowing me to, I'm a representative of friends of the store, Nacogdoches Incorporated. of Friends of Historic Nakadoches Incorporated. We value Nakadoches history and those kind of things. So, we, there've been donors, these Four Seasons Garden Club and the other donors have given money to plant trees on the TJR campus. If you look at the most beautiful campus in our little town, it's SFA, and what's it covered with? Trees. That's why people go there, and they think this is beautiful. So, we picked out the TJR campus, and we like to plant trees, and in conjunction with your staff, we'll be, we'll be under their direction. We will plant the trees, buy the trees, and water the trees for a year, and usually about, that's all they need. So, that's the plan, as simple as that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hap, don't go anywhere. If the board will allow me to do something here. Ms. Hap, because you're with the Friends of Historical Nakadoches, I have a document here that is 123 years old, okay? This document here was given to me by the Dutton family when I came here the first month, first few months as a superintendent, and it says Public Schools of Nakadoches County, 1902. And if you want perspective, E.J. Campbell was 23 years old. He was a young man, okay? And so, I want to take this document, because it doesn't belong to me. I got to know the Dutton family really well. Matter of fact, when we were under quarantine with COVID, they were the only family that I knew. They came over and brought me dinner, and we sat down and we watched the sunset. And there's a lot of great history here, but it's from 1902, and it belongs with you, sir, and belongs with the Historical Society, and it belongs as a commemorative item for Nakadoches ISD. And this is from the superintendent at the time. That's, I'm trying to see if I can find his name. It's Hans S.W. Blont, is in 1903. So, I want to give you this document, sir, please.
Thank you. Okay. I move, move to item C.
Make a motion to accept that donation.
I would like to move that we approve the cash donations totaling $3,929.50, and the cash, and a noncash donation of trees and labor from Friends of Historic Nakadoches.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Okay. Now, item C is a consider and possibly approve a resolution approving an interlocal agreement for the resale of the tax foreclosed properties. Mr. Ben Everland, and I believe you have somebody that can help you on that.
Yes, sir, we do have a guest. This is Mr. Patrick McArthur from Purdue Brandon, and we touched a little bit on this on Monday at our agenda review, and he's here to answer any questions that you may have. So, I'll step aside.
Good evening, Board. Again, my name is Patrick McArthur. Your lead attorney is named Patrick Woods. My name's Patrick McArthur, it's close enough. But I'm happy to answer any questions. We can go into the details if you want, but I'll just leave it at that. If you have questions, I'm here to answer it and help in any way I can.
Basically, we're giving up legal liability for all these properties that are not going to give us anything, and it goes to the city, right?
Yeah, well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't describe it that way. This is more of a process whereby, it's a streamlined process. So, the city wants to implement kind of an urban renewal process through the tax system, and here, it's specific to properties that have already gone to the tax sale, nobody wanted them, nobody bid on it, and so now they're struck off, they're available for resale. And so, they want to take specific properties that fit within the parameters of being more than six years old and are abandoned or blighted, and they want to resell those to buyers that would make it, you know, potentially into affordable housing, or, you know, just improving the neighborhood type thing to better buyers. Typically, what would happen in that scenario would be that a buyer would come in, they would offer something less than what was sold, or offered at the tax sale, and then you have to get every taxing unit to review and approve that bid. And the tax code allows a provision, a mechanism, specific to this, where it's more urban renewal, and it just streams, streamlines that process. So, what you're giving up is the right, essentially, to reject that bid. You know, and again, this is very specific properties, it has to be, it had to be delinquent for more than six years, and it had to be abandoned. So, they'd be looking at a very narrow subset of properties that have already gone through the process of going to tax sale and didn't get sold. So, again, this streamlines the process, makes it more efficient. You're not really, I mean, all you're really giving up is the right to say no to somebody that comes along and wants to buy a property and make it better. And I always give, you know, whenever folks or my clients are asking me about this, I think, in my opinion, the most important thing is to get that property back on the tax roll to a buyer that's willing to approve it and pay the taxes to bring in revenue to the school. So, this just makes that faster.
Let me just change one word. We, when we've signed this document and it doesn't go for sale, that means we're never going to get money for it, so it relieves us of liability, because we've already said, if it's not going to go and produce money for our students in this district, we want it to go for something else that's better than what it's doing right now.
Correct.
Improve our, our community.
Correct.
So, we're releasing this to not have liability, but for the greater cause of improving our community.
Correct.
And we will streamline it, just like you said.
Correct.
The purchaser doesn't have to pay the delay tax?
They're going to make a bid, so let's say, typically at a tax sale, the first time it goes to the tax sale, the tax sale minimum bid is the lesser of the appraised value or the tax total cost due. And so, this is after that's already happened. So, it was at the tax sale, nobody wanted to pay, you know, the lesser of those two things. And so, now it's just sitting there, struck off, and it's continuing not to bring in revenue for the school. So, you know, the city will take that, they're going to take in bids, they're going to have certain requirements, that a bidder come in, let's say it was at the tax sale for a thousand, they want to come in and bid $250, okay, well, we'll sell it to you, and we already have the backing and approval of all the taxing units, but we want to make sure you're doing X, Y, and Z. You're going to tear down the structure, build something new, whatever parameters they're putting forward.
Got it.
I don't have a polluted mind, but the same person that owned the property can come by themselves.
They cannot. That's prevented by the tax bill.
I also want to say, I thank your firm and you for doing the best for our children, this district, and our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Patrick, a point of clarification for the board, is this city, does it also include county?
So, every taxing unit, it's just the city that's doing this project.
Okay.
So, we're talking about properties that fall within Nakadoches ISD and the city. You know, potentially, you have properties that fall in your jurisdiction, your taxing jurisdiction, that aren't in the city, those properties aren't part of this, it's just the city that's, the city properties that are involved.
Thank you.
So, you guys have to approve, the county has to approve, they have the same thing set on their agenda in April, and so each taxing unit has to approve, and you guys.
Great.
Okay. I need a motion for that.
I move that we approve a resolution approving an interlocal agreement for the resale of tax foreclosed properties pursuant to Texas Tax Code 34.05.
Okay.
Respect it.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Ms. Anderson, his motion carries. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Sorry you had to wait so long.
That's okay.
Thank you.
And good luck to you, Dr. Trujillo.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Safe travels.
Thank you very much.
Okay. This is, I have a lot of resentment to read. It says, consideration of and board action to accept resignation of superintendent of schools and release from contract. The motion action is on page 810, and I ask for roll call one at a time.
We need to make a motion.
Yes. It's a motion, it's on computer.
I move that the board accept the resignation letter from Dr. Gabriel Trujillo and release him from his contract effective April 1st, 2025.
Okay. Somebody brave enough to second that?
I second.
Okay. Ms. Hap? Dr. Gromen?
Yes, we release him.
Okay. Ms. Winslow?
Yes.
Reverend Irving?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Ms. Abbott?
Yes.
Ms. Pittcock?
Yes.
Reverend Pittcock, I'm sorry. Mr. Mantoya?
Can I have some time to think about it? Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Ms. Anderson? Okay. Next, is the same, consideration of and board action on contract with Arrow Educational Services Incorporated. Your motion page is on 812, and I need a motion.
I'll move, the board approve the contract from Arrow Educational Services, Inc., for the superintendent search in the amount of $8,500 plus travel and clerical expenses.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. Again, we start again, as Dr. Gromen?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Winslow?
Yes.
Reverend Irving?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Ms. Hap?
Yes.
Mr. Pittcock?
Yes.
And Mr. Mantoya?
Yes.
Okay. That moves on, Ms. Anderson. And next is F, consideration of and possible board action on an appointment of interim superintendent and approval of contract. Again, I need a motion.
I move that we approve Dr. Darrell D. Myers to, we approve, to appoint Darrell Myers to serve as interim superintendent with a start date, I don't have, April 1st.
April 1. April 1.
I don't have the date on my list.
We'll be sharing an office for a day.
Okay, I need a second.
I second.
Okay. We go back again. Dr. Gromen?
Yes.
Ms. Winslow?
Yes.
Reverend Irving?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Ms. Hap?
Yes.
Reverend Pittcock?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Mantoya?
Yes.
Okay. Our interim superintendent, would you stand up, please?
Dr. Myers.
Dr. Myers.
Dr. Myers.
As I mentioned in the private, he is well experienced, highly qualified, and welcome to Nakadoches.
Yes.
And look forward to work with you. Okay, Reverend Irving, this is the time.
That's me in this, Joe.
Which one of you are going to make motion?
I would like to have something to say.
Oh, I have.
I'm not ready to leave yet.
Okay.
Can I just say?
Go ahead.
Want to make a comment?
Okay, I just, I'm going to have to read this, because I get a little emotional, and I still might. I just wanted to express my deep appreciation for all that you have done, Dr. Trujillo, and brought to Nakadoches ISD, and the legacy that you will leave behind. I was thinking about all the things and events we have experienced with you at the helm of this ship. You left the big city, and you came to us behind this little pine curtain of East Texas, and you became a part of our community and our fellowship. Your departure will certainly leave a gaping hole. There are a few things that came to mind of some of the experiences that we've had. One of them was the completion of all of our bond projects, except for one. We have had a nationwide pandemic. We converted all of our in-person learning to online and electronic, and then we developed a plan to bring our kids back to school, and in a staggered way, and then we got them all back. And there's, this has never been done before, there was not a template, and you pioneered the way. You partnered with our city and county during Snowmageddon to make sure our residents were provided for in the very worst of times. You pushed our CTE program forward so that all of our kids have an opportunity for a career path, and ensuring that everyone can have a signing day. You brought about the District of Innovation to our district with a great detail to the planning, to be sure that you protected our teachers and our kids. You got us all set up with a teacher incentive allotment, making sure that we have great plans to help our teachers achieve their goals. And during our COVID time, you made sure that we took advantage of all of the funding opportunities. You utilized SIR funds in such a brilliant way to make sure that we, we took advantage of every opportunity with our bond funds and kept that all protected. You've mended so many relationships between the district and the community, you've restored trust, and you've improved our reputation. All in all, you have set the bar incredibly high, and we now have the burden of making sure that we continue all of the great things you have started and set into motion. I cannot find any words that truly represent the appreciation I have for you and all you have done, and the integrity you've restored to this position of NAC ISD Superintendent. I wish you and Deborah the very best, and I know that Grand Prairie better get ready to put their running shoes on. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to go next, but Ms. Winslow stole my thunder, said a lot of things, but I'm going to, I have a list that long, but I'm not going to take everybody's time. Personally, I think we got stolen. Something was stolen from us. That was their gain, is our loss. He is well-liked in the community, he's well-trusted, he's a member of almost every organization except the one I haven't created yet. He made us School of Innovation, helped establish NISD Education Foundation in a correct, solid base, strong support, and fierce advocate for public school and students, very focused on the quality education that our students are receiving, that NISD now has Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Education and Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education. Nakadoches now has an ESL education program that's second to none, managed SIR money very well, which saves us a lot of money on bond money, and saved the bond money for other operations. Our CTE program was in an embryonic stage when he arrived, and now he is well-accomplished and expanding, which gives us our students another pathway for their education and their future. Establish ROTC program, which is growing. Build a strong relation with SFA and their new president. Support and monitor STEM program. Has excellent relationship with the NISD board members. If you recall, a lady came here and said, "Y'all miss me?" She used to give us H-E-W-L, but she is most friendly now. Has an excellent relationship with all the board members, as you noticed that. Strong support of fine art and band program. We have a police department with a four police person, with all completely geared up, with the excellent communication system, that with one call, all first responders would be available. Honestly, again, I'm going to repeat myself, this departure is our loss and their gain. This is a simple portion of what I had to say, but, Ms...
I'm sure other people say the same thing.
Lee Beth, can I go next? Estos tres permanecen fe, esperanza, y amor. Y lo más grande es el amor. These three remain, faith, hope, and love, and the greatest of these is love.
And he certainly, certainly demonstrates that. Well, I'd like to share something, if you would allow me to. Deborah?
Thank you. She followed, followed me to the pines. So couldn't have done this without her first. So thank you. Holly? I'm gonna miss, I'm gonna miss this woman. You made every day amazing. I was very low maintenance. I know I was. But when I needed you, you were really there. Doc, Mindy, Reverend, Coach, Leabeth, Pitcock, Mr. Montoya. You guys are an amazing board, an amazing board. And for the most part, this is the board that hired me. And I made you a promise and I stuck to it. But I'm gonna tell you, I look out into this audience and you mentioned a lot of things that we did. And I say "we" because the work was here. The magic was here. The people were here. All I had to do was ask them, how do you know? And they know what that means. How do you know? And they went out and they found out. And they asked questions, they put committees together, they did amazing things as a group. This is an amazing, amazing community. From the kids to the teachers, to the community that's here, to the SFA. I'm, I love every bit of it. And I've already made a promise that I'm not gonna not come back. We have to come back and defend our first place with the brisket at the do that. So I will be back for that. And when I spoke at Grand Prairie just the other day, I gave them my appreciation for coming to them. But I also said to them, if you want to find a small town with a great big heart, you gotta go to Nacogdoches. And you gotta be able to see the amazing things in that little community. This is Mayberry. This is Mayberry come to life. And I'm gonna miss every single one of the folks that are out here, but this is a goodbye. This is a funny world. Our paths cross and crisscross. So thank you all so much for this opportunity to come in here and lead. You took a risk on myself. And thank you, Deborah. I'm sorry I couldn't get it out earlier. But thank you, Deborah, because we came in here as, as a pair and it's, it's been glorious. And I thank, I thank my Lord and Savior. I thank Him with all my heart and my conviction that He gave me the strength and the fortitude to do this job every single day so that when I went to bed, I got up the next day and I said, did I do something good today? And I did. And we did something better the next day. So thank you very much.
Dr. Trujillo, don't forget to come. Don't forget to talk to Blueberry.
Oh, no. And the old town rigged down.
If there's no one else to speak, I have one more thing to do. Is there anybody else that wants to speak? Okay. I would like for you to trust me. I would like everyone who willingly wants to, to stand right now. I would like to provide an auditory and visual despedida or goodbye to this man. Oh, you can't sit, stand up and neither can Deborah. Deborah, why don't you come up here with, with Dr. Trujillo?
Holly, I don't think this is in the rule book, is it?
Okay. So remember, our community loves this man and his wife. And they've done much for us. And we, I would like that we together can offer something that no one else probably has ever offered him. And I'll, I'll explain that in just one second. So we together respect you for who you are, for the service you've provided to every child, every teacher, every person in this community. And we love you. And we want to demonstrate this to the big-hearted dragon with, that is a mentor and a model for this community. So we'd like to finish this by a standing ovation.
Okay.
You ready?
Now I ask for the motion.
I move that we adjourn. I second.
Okay.